Okay, good evening. Today is 5/28/2015. This is the Hyde Park Central School District's Board of Education meeting. I may have a motion to enter executive session for to discuss confidential matters pertaining to the employment, future employment of a particular person or persons, collective bargaining, negotiations, and matter of litigation, please.
Some move?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you. All right, thank you very much for being patient with us. I know we're five minutes late, but we had a very important event, a tenure reception for newly tenured personnel, and we're really excited that we think these are great people and they're going to be with us for until you retire. How's that?
That's part of the contract.
That's part of the contract. Yes, it is part of the contract. So, at this time, can I have a motion to exit executive session, please?
Some move?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor? Pose. Thank you. We're back in. And let me close some documents here. I believe there are no agenda items, new agenda items. I may have a motion to accept the -- oh, we do that. I'm out of sync here. We're up to the -- let's do the pledge allegiance. Wow. I'm so excited about this. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. Now, we can talk about agenda modifications. There are none as I know of. I may have a motion to adopt tonight's agenda as listed.
Some move?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Pose. Thank you. Let me just get down here. That brings us to Pride. Well, we've had a lot of good stuff happening recently. I think the first thing I would like to personally thank the community for supporting our budget. They're not easy to put together, and I'm happy that almost 70% of you agreed. So that's -- thank you very much.
Sure. I have several things. I'll start with the FDR Interact Club. We had some of the members here not too long ago in celebration of their event, but they also had their installation dinner at which they identified all of their new officers. So if you're unfamiliar with the Interact Club, they are dedicated to community service and doing activities that support many, many different organizations and people in our community. So congratulations to them. We also had recent press about the Promising Pals Program at the North Park Elementary School. And this is a tradition that was carried over from Hyde Park Elementary, and it allows each fifth grader in the building to interact with an adult of their choosing, and they do that through letters. I had the privilege of being a Promising Pal this year.
Real letters?
Yes, real letters, real handwritten letters in an envelope with a stamp that gets delivered by the mailman or mail person. Yeah, I know. Very special. And the children choose their Promising Pals from a list of people that are identified by both their professions and their interests. So it may be a veterinarian, or a schoolteacher, or a policeman, or any number of things. So we had a great spread in the paper. Promising Pals get together during annual event at North Park Elementary. After several weeks of sharing the letters, the Promising Pals and their children get together for a tea and have opportunity to meet for the first time in person. And sometimes those relationships continue after fifth grade, which is really wonderful. We have some sports news. Both our varsity girls softball and the boys' baseball won their quarterfinal sectional games on Tuesday of this week. Both teams are playing actually while this evening, we have results from both. I'll let Dan do that because he was there for part of it.
The girls did win, so they'll go on to the finals on Thursday. The belief is that they'll be playing Kingston, who is the number one seed. Roosevelt went into it as the number two seed. We just learned as we were walking from the reception to here that the unfortunate the boys' baseball team, after playing in a one-to-one tie for some seven innings, lost in the 10th inning three to one. So their season has ended.
But it was a good season.
But they've had a great season. Best I can remember, the last time we went that far was back, I don't want to say how many years, but it was a good 15, 17 years when my son was playing on a team. We lost Arlington in the baseball finals, two to one in the bottom of the 10th on a bad hop, as we say, a bad hop base hit. It wasn't our fault, but.
Okay.
And tomorrow, or this weekend, just to fill in the other things that are going on, we have a boy from the golf team that's going to be competing at the state finals. And he actually competed yesterday. If you get today's paper, you'll see that he competed in an invitational of the top 12 golf, high school golfers in the Dutchess County area, and he finished third behind two Spackenkill players.
That's Jeff Peters that we're talking about?
Jeff Peters, right. And that the boys that have availed themselves of finally being able to have competitive competition in track and field on our new facility have advanced from two years ago when they never had hosted a team to they will be sending 42 runners to the next level competition this weekend, tomorrow, actually.
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow, actually, which is an amazing step and makes a big difference when you can practice on a field that you run on and you can have competition on your grounds every now and then against teams you're playing. So they've really come a long way. So it's been a very exciting and a very fruitful spring season for us.
Staying with athletics just for another minute, we had the Mahal Scholar Athletes Breakfast, and two of our students were recognized there. And the thing that I think is most special about this is that these are athletes who are also very accomplished scholars. So on the field, in the classroom, they are wonderfully successful. Sarah Berry and Chris Gabrojuski were recognized at the breakfast. We also had students do a college signing today, and I think Doug, you were present for that?
I was, and I didn't write down their names, but I think Dan knows them.
Unfortunately, I don't really know who they are.
I can remember one went to Pace, the other one went to a small school in North Carolina. Two football players and a lacrosse player, and they were really nice young men.
We can get the lacrosse answer.
Jordan Jones is going to Lee's.
Jordan Jones.
Aiden Burkhart is going to Lee's McCray.
Aiden Burkhart.
And Nick Ammon is going to Pace.
Nick Ammon. Great. Thank you, Nick. We're glad you're here. And then, let's see, I'm not quite done. We also have Jean Schofield, who is one of our art teachers. She works at Haviland Middle School, received a certificate of appreciation signed by our governor, and I'll read what it says. She was unable to be here tonight, but I did see her earlier today. This is a certificate of appreciation presented to Jean Schofield of Haviland Middle School for her participation in the Empire State 2015 Dr. King Fine Arts and Essay Display during the 2015 Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Memorial Observance. And in the letter, it indicates that all these entries that our students created, both artwork and essays, were displayed on the concourse at the Empire State Plaza in Albany during the celebration, and this was from January to February of this year. The many positive responses that we received from the viewing public indicated that the artwork was enjoyed by all. The children's efforts to produce these creative pieces as part of this year's commemoration of Dr. King were greatly appreciated. It is the involvement and dedication of educators like you who helped to make this historic event a meaningful success. Your tireless efforts to teach the children of New York State the importance of Dr. King's legacy of nonviolence are truly noteworthy. Thank you for your participation. And there are certificates for each of the students from Haviland who participated in that. So we're very proud of that. And FDR's award night was last night. Many, 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 many of our students recognized for their various accomplishments. And Doug has another informal before we move to formal.
Right. I consider this, one of my kids, Emily Graulow from Violet Avenue, is a published author in the Poughkeepsie Journal. She was in my last year's fourth year class that I read to, and I'm always excited to see the continuing to read and enjoy stories, and I'm very pleased with this.
Good.
Just to context of yesterday's award ceremony at the high school, it was the academic awards mostly. I stopped counting at a point somewhere in the neighborhood of $220,000 of scholarship money that was offered or that students qualified for, including one I'd never heard of before that Sam got. I can't think of it. It's an organization that provides scholarship matches for first-time, first-family students. In other words, a student, first time in a family that a student would be going to college with economic needs. He qualified in 4% of the applications that were made. They match him up with, they currently have 39 of the top universities in the United States that are participating in that. And by the time they started with the numbers of applications that started and the final awarding, he was among the 4% that were awarded full scholarships. He is going to Wesleyan University on a full scholarship.
That's great.
Which is absolutely amazing.
Yep.
And other schools that were giving out scholarships, Marist College, RIT, RPI, some of the best schools in the state offer scholarships. And a lot of them go to juniors, which is interesting. The juniors are recognized for their achievements at that point. They're made an award and guaranteed if they apply and get accepted to that school, they would get a minimum of $10,000 a year in most of the cases that they were talking about. So it's an amazing way to start when you're going into your senior year, knowing you've got a little bit of a bundle in your back pocket you didn't intend to get, and it really is a good start for the kids. They were absolutely amazing.
Yeah, I'd like to say something a little about the scholarships, which disturbs me, is that for every dollar that a student gets in one of these organizations, should they be getting a scholarship from a school, that dollar is subtracted from the school's scholarship. So it almost, in some cases, the way the system works, doesn't make sense to even apply for.
I did.
And I think that should change. It's really, you know, a kid that gets a $10,000 scholarship here, and he's going to Yale or something, and he's got a $12,000. Yale say, okay, here's $2,000, use the other 10. And that doesn't seem right to me, but.
What you do is you put a bug in the year of the local scholarship offers to kind of suggest that they don't report it to the colleges.
Yeah.
Because if it's not reported, they don't deduct it. But honestly, if you get even down to a couple of hundred dollars being presented by memorials and something like that, if you report it to the colleges, you suddenly see your scholarship offer then reissued with that hundred dollars deducted.
Yeah.
It's very unfortunate. Been through that, done that eight times.
Me too. All right, we have.
Another informal pride before we ask our guests to join us. Okay. I'm going to ask Mary Ann Williams and her students to join us at the podium. Her students are here because of recognition for their participation in the New York State History Day Competition, and Mary Ann's going to give us the details.
So thank you for having us. This is four fifths of our team that is part of the American Studies Course. And the American Studies Course, as you know, has been a longstanding course in which the students are invited to complete a documentary, to produce and create a documentary film. This year, we extended, they would say forced them, but we offered the option of doing a historical documentary and really thinking about entering that into the local history day competition that's run by New York State and is held at the FDR Library, the Presidential Library. And they, this group took the offer, and they did, had a local connection and a personal connection. Tessa's grandfather knew a man who gave his life in the Korean War, and he was a Korean War vet, and his name is Charlie Johnson. And he's a really profound, he's had a profound impact on both the people that served in Korea as well as students in the Pleasant Valley, Arlington, and Millbrook areas today. And they did a beautiful job researching, preparing, and really getting at interviews, both from people who served with him as well as the legacy that he has helped to create. They did such a great job. We went right to the state competition, and we were one of 12 documentaries to compete, which I have to say, the state competition was an amazing experience. It was at the Cooperstown Baseball Hall of Fame. So we got to show our film with the Baseball Hall of Fame. And they went through the experience of really having students from all across the state who had been going through the same experience defend their films, and it really was a nice way to get introduced into sort of peer critique and peer review at a very high level. And they performed really well. We didn't make it to the finals. However, considering this was our first time out of the gate, and we were going without a rubric, they're brilliant, they're amazing, they're creative, they are absolutely dedicated and hardworking, and I just want you to know that I'm proud to be their teacher, and we should all be really thankful that these are our students. Thank you.
So we also want to thank and recognize Mary Ann for her work, because all of our students benefit tremendously from teachers like Mary Ann who invite them, right? That was the word you chose? Invite them to perform at such high levels and with such creativity and dedication. And all of the things that we talk about all of the time around being confident, curious, courageous learners, right? That is our mission and our vision statement is really exemplified in the work that they've done. And so thank you, Mary Ann, as well. Thank you to Jen Kreiser-Amy, our Director of Humanities, for the support that she offers to that program as well. So we'd like to offer each of our students just a token of our appreciation and a certificate. So I'm going to start with Jade.
Thank you. And De'ara. Congratulations. Tess. Tess Manning. And I'll give this one to Mary Ann for Alex, who couldn't be with us tonight. Thank you so much, and thank you for taking time to be with us. You're welcome.
One thing, actually, I think this is a really important program, and if you need equipment, I would come to the tech committee that we're now looking into what we're going to spend the technology bond money on. And I think this is important enough to.
Oh, thank you so much.
You know, in case you need cameras or other video type equipment.
Thank you.
I think it would be a good use of some of this money.
Thank you so much.
So make sure you get your.
Great. Can I plug our screening?
Please.
Plug away. Please, yes.
So I just want to say one more thing. If you all would join us at Upstate Films, we're going to be screening all of the student documentaries on Saturday, January, no, sorry, Saturday, June 20th at 9:30 in the morning. That's Saturday, June 20th, 9:30 at Upstate. So please join us.
Wonderful of them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I thought that would be a good use of technology.
Okay. So do we have any other superintendent report?
Beyond that, no.
Okay. Moving to 7.2, the budget vote and board member election results. If you didn't know, Proposition 1, the budget passed 1287 to 567. Proposition 2, purchase of school buses passed 1222 to 597. And Proposition 3, which we need to discuss about how we're going to fill this position, the student board member passed 1338 to 471. Now, and those were the results. And we have the board member, and surprise, surprise, Mr. Sheldon and Mr. Madermar were unanimously reelected and put back on the board. So, and like I said before, we thank everybody for getting out and exercising your right to vote, whether it's yes or no, we don't really, well, we care, but your right to vote the way you want. So we're thankful that it passed. Okay.
I'll do that one.
You doing that one? At this point, we have a presentation on the district, the Bard Partnership.
Yes. So it's my pleasure to invite Deborah Krawchuk and Kelly Gould to the podium. And while they're making their way, I'll just give a little bit of an introduction. We are very fortunate to live where we live and be surrounded by institutions of higher learning, including Bard and Marist and Vassar and our SUNY system. And several years ago, we began a partnership with Bard. And at the time, when I first met with our contact there, I told them a little bit about one of my visions that we're still working on, which is because we have so many colleges and universities around us, one of my hopes is that at some point, any day that you walk into one of our schools, you would see our partners from colleges and universities working side by side with our teachers and administrators. And so in a perhaps baby step toward that, we have started offering courses to our teachers on our campus. And we've been able, in the last several years, primarily through grant money, so in most cases at no cost to the district, we've been able to provide to our teachers free three-credit courses from Bard. And there are people in the room, in addition to Kelly and Deborah, who have benefited from that and enjoyed that experience and have really done a beautiful job applying what they have learned in those courses in their own classrooms. So we're getting closer to that vision that I described. This year, completely with grant funds, we were able not only to offer two, three-credit courses, but also to offer stipends to some of the teachers who participated in those courses. And the stipend required that they not only learn what they could and share it in their own classroom, but that they offer support to their peers. And there were nine different choices for how they could share that information, develop it, create projects that would either communicate the work or share the work in some concrete ways with colleagues. One of the choices was to do a board presentation. And Deborah and Colleen were the only two brave enough to do that. So I'm not sure what that means, whether it's scary to come here and be with us, or if the other projects spoke more to their colleagues. But I'm really, really pleased that they have been willing to put together some information to share with you. So I'm going to turn it over to them and let them share with you some of their own experiences.
How do I pull up our PowerPoint?
You should be able to just scroll down. If you enter, you should be able to get there.
My name is Deborah Krawchuk. I am a seventh grade life science teacher at Haviland Middle School. In addition to teaching at Haviland, I'm also a master teacher in New York State. This is Kelly Gould. Kelly is an eighth grade math teacher at Haviland.
There's a button that changes the.
You gotta flip this, no, no, on the remote, change.
Okay. 30 teachers have participated in the Bard Project in the last three years. I've had the privilege of participating in all three of the math-science projects, and last year participated as one of the instructors in the STEM Camp. This is Kelly's.
First year in the graduate course and my second year working with the STEM Camp. So as I said, this is my first year in the graduate course and my second year in the STEM Camp, and it's been a really amazing experience so far. I'm going to speak to how I've taken that into my own classroom to help enhance my teaching and thus help my students learn. So I'm going to discuss how I've used STEM activities and how I've also incorporated the observational skills I've learned from the graduate course. And we're going to skip that one and come back to it, actually. Maybe one more. Oh, okay, or not. I actually changed some of the slides, but did not know that since this was the board-approved one, I didn't have what I had before. So I'll just speak from what I have done. So in terms of how this has affected my teaching, I'm going to begin with the graduate course. Specifically, we focused on peer observation. And as a teacher, I think that has tremendously helped how I teach and thus how my students learn. I've had some colleagues come into my classroom, and I've been able to go into their classroom, and I've learned from both of those experiences. Particularly, I've gotten feedback on how I manage my classroom, how behavior is managed, and how I deliver my content. And I found that to be specifically helpful for my teaching and also for, thank you, over. Thank you. And also for helping my other colleagues as well. So, yeah, it's not on there. That's okay, I can speak from this. So I think the biggest piece for me, especially being a math AIS teacher, I don't think that was mentioned, I teach AIS as well as Algebra I. For AIS, I share students with other teachers who are their main teacher, that teach them in Math 8. And to be able to go into those classrooms and see how those teachers teach, and to be able to support my students through seeing how they're taught initially, has been really tremendous. And I think it's something that I should continue to do and that I have done before, but definitely something I want to continue to do. With respect to how that has transferred into my own teaching specifically in the classroom, I am more aware of how my students perceive the lesson. I know it's a district goal to be able to really focus on what the learning goal is in the classroom. We have our ICAN statements up on the board. I think a lot of people can relate to that. And this course has really helped me to be aware of how important it is to really relate back to that throughout the lesson, so that the students are perceiving it exactly as I'm trying to convey it to them. The other piece is directly how I've been addressing observational skills with my students. I was hoping to share some pictures today with a recent lesson that was done after this was submitted, but that was not the case. What I did recently with my students was an activity that was actually adapted from one of the STEM activities. I gave them a picture that had a mathematical concept underlying in it. Specifically, they were parallel lines cut by a transversal representing angle relationships. And within that, they had to become the observer and observe the picture, and then create directions that another student could recreate that picture. And within the picture, in each angle, there was a different kind of picture, like a smiley face, maybe a heart, a star, different colors. So they really had to be able to observe that picture and take it in and convey that in their directions. And what my students noticed is that maybe some of those directions were conveyed really well, but then some were not. So from that, they were able to see how their mathematical vocabulary really was helpful in conveying those directions and how that helps them to communicate. But a lot of times, they saw that how they perceived something was not necessarily how others perceived it. So that was pretty cool. The other piece of this partnership is the STEM program, and I think that has really infiltrated my teaching in a really positive way. And I think that has really infiltrated my teaching in a really positive way. The activity I just spoke of was adapted from one of the STEM activities, and this is, well, we've got to go back to.
I can do that.
Okay. The other STEM activity that I did was taken from what we did last summer with the seventh graders. And in that activity, they really drew upon their ratio and proportional reasoning skills. But I adapted it to be used in the Algebra I classroom. And there, they use their bivariate data skills. So this was the Barbie bungee jump activity. They were given a Barbie doll, a bunch of rubber bands, and a meter stick. And their goal was to launch Barbie off of the stairwell and get her as close to the ground as she could without actually hitting the ground. It was really awesome and engaging. But students were able to take the data that they got from that, make scatter plots, do line, line of S-fit, do a linear regression, and use that in order to solve the problem here. And what I really found was that it's something that cannot be done using a traditional method. They were able to really get engaged, to really connect that to like a real-world situation. And they were so interested in how that math translated into something that was real. When they didn't get it right, they went back into the math and looked to see what they could do to make it better. And that gave them a deeper understanding that really, I think, is something that couldn't have been done otherwise. So in such ways as observational skills, connecting to real-world application, I think that this opportunity has really enhanced my teaching, and I thank you for giving me that opportunity.
Very good.
I too have two separate things I want to talk about. The first one for me is the STEM. Having participated in Camp Invention in the summer before the Bard STEM camp began, I was able to learn how to develop inquiry skills in my students. And what the Bard program has offered is the opportunity to ask the kids to extend themselves, to reach outside their comfort zone, and to think new ideas. So what I've introduced into my classroom is STEM Monday. So the first Monday of every month, my life science students are engaged in engineering activities. These are things like designing towers, designing bridges, making catapults. They require math skills, they require thinking skills, they require some of the vocabulary that they've learned in science, in life science, but also some engineering vocabulary. So the students are given a task, they're given a box of things, and they have to use those things to design, draw, and create. And then, once it's done, they have to test it and then report back to their classmates. So they report how they worked together, how they did their design, they make an engineering plan. After it's tested, they present to the class their findings. It could be a graph, it could be, did this project work? Why did it work? Why didn't it work? How can I improve it? While they're making their presentations, they're also taking notes on what the other teams did. And then they're looking for ways that they can take what the other team did and bring it back to their own project. So there's a constant reworking, reimagining, making things better. The final outcome of this is that my students have learned to work together in small groups. They have learned that very often you are working with people you might not necessarily have communicated with before, and you have to learn how to communicate, you have to learn how to work with all kinds of people in all kinds of situations. They've also learned reflection skills, which comes out of our Bard graduate classes. Very often, students don't get the opportunity to reflect, just like teachers don't get the opportunity to reflect. So one of the things they do at the end of every one of their STEM activities is write a reflection. How they contributed to their team, how they helped to make their teamwork a success, and what they will do next time in the next group that they go to. So we've done twelve of these right now, and the students are very excited to continue next year in the eighth grade. They've gone to the sixth-grade science classrooms, and they've done some STEM activities with our sixth graders to get them excited about coming to seventh grade. So if you could, put in the next one. So the other, the other part of my discussion is what the Bard class has helped me to do. In addition to the three graduate courses I've done with Bard, I've also been able to take that and use the reflective piece and the writing piece to help with furthering my personal education. The whole purpose of the first Bard program was to introduce us to writing. The second one was to introduce us to lessons and lesson planning. This one was to introduce us to observations and peer observations. We're hoping to, next time, add another course that would include reflection. We all know that it's very important to understand what you did, it's also very important to reflect on what you've done. And I think that is something that I see Jen smiling about. The whole purpose of having this observation and reflection piece given to us is that it's allowed us as colleagues to work together, which is something we very often don't get to do, especially the science teachers. We're so pigeonholed into our classrooms and doing what we do in our particular content. So we've been able to go to other science classes and observe, other math classes and observe. And then we've been able to take that peer feedback and use it to help improve our own practice. For me, it's been invaluable, especially when I go into an eighth-grade science classroom and I see how my students last year remembered some of the things they've done in my class and how they've been able to expand it. So my hope is that we will be able to continue this in the future and that we will be able to get more people involved. This year, we were blessed with having not only a math and science, but a humanities piece as well, taught by two very capable, very competent, very caring Bard professors who helped us to understand our jobs better so that we can make our students' lives better. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Just in case, anybody have any, any questions you want to ask about the Kornbook? Could you bring it back?
Oh, this is.
Yeah, that's mine. Okay. And as soon as I get my agenda back here, we can move on. This is called Technology: You Live and You Die, depending on whether or not it works. Nobody said it.
I'll get us up next.
It was easy. Next up, we got Capital Project Update, Phase 4A. Mr. Elliot Garcia. In all his editorial. Oh, oh, oh. Oh, oh. I like that.
I'm on it.
Okay. We have a ten, we have a ten-minute rule.
I'm going to try to do it in six. If you guys go on the other four, that's not, not on me.
He wants to bank the other four minutes.
Good evening, everybody. We, we've gotten to a good enough point in the project where we wanted to present a brief update to the board and to the public to let everybody know where we stand with the Haviland heating project. Just a quick background, we did this project in three phases. The first phase was the circulator pumps that moved the hot water to the A and B sections of the building. Phase 4A2 is the doors and windows. Anytime you do a heating project of this type, there's some building structural work that has to be done as well. And Phase 3 is the mechanical system, which is the actual equipment that makes the heat happen, the univentilators, the air handling units, exhaust fans, et cetera. And we're going to talk a little bit more about the Phase 4A3 portion. Now, the pumps were done late last year in the fall, between December and January. They're up and running. They are a huge contributing factor as to what got us through this winter with minimal interruption. The doors and windows bid was awarded in March, and we anticipate that work to begin in July. However, we just got approval on the mechanical system portion this month, a couple of weeks ago, May thirteenth to be exact. And a little background on the timeline for Phase 4A3. In November, we submitted the plans to state ed for approval, and I don't have to read you every bullet on the timeline, but you can see every month, there was follow-up from the administration here in district. Dr. Reitzick sent letters to SED. Wayne, a couple of weeks later, followed up with another letter asking for expedited review. And the reason for that is that initial timeline was pretty tight. In order to get the project done this summer, we needed to have approval from state ed sometime between February and March. Now unfortunately, that didn't happen. We followed up again in, in March. Dr. Reitzick reached out to the SED Assistant Commissioner at the time, Chuck Subarella. In April, we engaged BOSEs. We said, Duchess County BOSEs, please help. We got the interim superintendent and deputy superintendents to petition state ed on our behalf. And finally, in May, we got our approval for this third phase of the project. So unfortunately, that means that we can't hold to our initial timeline. The original timeline had this work beginning and being substantially completed by the end of this summer. So now we have two options. We can phase in the project and go into the school year that's coming up, or we can delay the entire project. And when I say the entire project, the mechanical piece, we're talking specifically about 4A3. We can do it in stages, starting the summer, and then finish it next summer, or we can start and finish it next summer into next fall. So right now, now that we have approval, we can put the project out to bid. We agreed with project team to bid it in a base bid and alternate fashion, where the base bid would be the multi-phase approach, and the bid alternate would be the delay. At this point, it's, it's difficult for us to make a recommendation to the board as to which way to go, because we don't know how the pricing's going to shake out. There's different schools of thought on how a vendor would approach a project like this. They may prefer to wait till the summer, when they can do it all in one shot. Some may prefer to do it second shift and on weekends and bleed it through the year. So without having the numbers, it's really hard for us to make a recommendation to the board. So what we're going to do is we're going to plan to move forward as, as scheduled with the doors and windows. That work can be done independent of the mechanical portion and finalize the bid package for the mechanical piece, put the project out to bid. Once we open the bids, we'll be able to review pricing for both options and then make a formal recommendation to the board as to how to proceed. And that's it, less than ten minutes.
Okay.
Questions?
I guess my question is, at what point do you have to have the information to make the decision to actually do it in a phased manner?
Well, the phases designed, our architect, Bill Wispauer, our project manager, Lou Rodriguez is also in the room with us, we worked together to figure out how to phase it. And the phasing is, was designed with the school year in mind. So we could start as, if we hit the ground in June with the bids and did the award in July, the work wouldn't probably start till August. Even if it started to September, it would just push our timeline back a month or so. But we, we really did phase it where we can start as soon as possible, once we have the information.
And in terms of building comfort and livability, as such, what's the difference is?
So.
And if we delay it, will there be any significant problems during the school year?
If we delay, we'd be living with Phases 1 and 3 relative, well, Phase 1 and, completed in Phase 3 substantially, or Phase 2, I'm sorry, the doors and windows substantially completed before the school year. No disruption to, to the student environment in that regard. As far as the functionality and viability of our equipment, it would be very similar to this winter. The pumps did a huge job in helping us move a lot more water, a lot more efficiently, to the far ends of the building. We did have a couple of space heaters used here and there, but nowhere near to the level that we had the year before. So the, having the pumps done, having that first piece of this project done, has been a huge help. If we do phase it in, it would require classroom relocation, no more than nine rooms at a time, and I think only in, in one phase would that be that many. It would be roughly between five and nine rooms taken out of, of service at a time during the school year. And that would be completed by the December-January holidays. Then we'd have to do the cafeterias and the rest of the B section, that library. We can't really take that out of service during the school year. So that's why, either way, we don't finish till the end of next summer.
Okay.
Because that cross-connecting section of the building would have to wait until the summer months. We can only phase the A side.
Do we have any assurance that it can be completed in the summer?
Well, if we wait, then we follow the same schedule we had for this year, next year. So all of that has been crunched down and timed out with the vendors, and part of the bid process is their guarantee that they can honor that timeline.
Obviously, you guys put your heads together, Bill and Louis and yourself. You're going to tell us what you feel more comfortable with, with waiting till next summer to do it because of the interference of the building or the building history, the building operated fairly well over the winter. Circulator pumps were a big plus for you. Now, in the numbers, the, the pricing, to me, would be, I don't know if significance is the right word, but if you delayed till the summer, I should think you'd get better pricing than you would by phasing it in. And besides that, you could run into interference any time in that, that project, something could go wrong.
Correct. And, and the way that the project timeline was originally designed, it would start in July, substantial completion in September, move to second shift, and we'd wrap it in October, early November, right before we really need the heat running full blast. But you're absolutely correct. We estimated, and again, the gentleman in the room that helped me put all this together, really crunched numbers, and we came up with anywhere between a five and 10% cost increase from the original cost estimation. And of that five to 10%, between three to 5% could fluctuate the difference between the phased option or the summer option. We're not really sure which way that's going to fluctuate, though, given that the vendors' priorities play a big part into how they bid this out.
I should think you might, you would get more participation if you delay it till the summer, especially if you put it out now for next summer. You know, you'd be the first project out in the fire there.
Right. Typically, mechanical contractors plan from the summer back. They, they get very busy and get a lot of work done in the summer. So a lot of it's conjecture at this point, and that's why we're not even saying that we don't know if it's going to be an add or a deduction in terms of how they bid it. Some contractors will give you a better price for the delay than the phase, because it gives them more time to plan. We're not really sure.
And the Phase 2, the, the window line in the doors doesn't connect to, to the heating project?
It does minimally. You're talking about just sill work where they would physically touch each other. But the vast majority of it is window replacement and wall replacement, door replacement, where it, it can, I'd say 85%, Bill, scope-wise, could be done independent of the mechanical portion, and they would have to come back whenever we wrap up to do the finish work.
Okay.
Just a question, based on my history with the board here. You're talking about windows. We went close to a decade before we finally got approval to upgrade the windows at that building and meet the state historic society concerns about the integrity of the historical nature of the building. Is there any concern or is there any impact on these changes we're making to the windows and stuff that might stir them up again?
No, sir. Luckily for us, the areas affected are in the nonhistoric part of the building, the northern face of the A section.
Oh, I like that answer.
Yeah. So no issue there.
Okay, Elliot, what about the, the money allotted for the project? Are we concerned that it's going to be close on the bids, or do you have any feel it may go over the, the projected number we have?
We, we are concerned, certainly. One of the things that we did do is we did not take any of the alternates on the door and window phase, because we didn't want to commit any more funds than absolutely necessary until we could shake out the mechanical portion. Beyond that, the three of us have been working to quantify certain pieces of the project that can be peeled off and purchased on state contract, where we can further lower the scope that we're putting out to bid and then address those issues separate from the main piece of the mechanical work. So we're, we're looking at different ways to remove things, delay things, or, or purchase on a state contract from an alternate vendor to give us a little bit more purchasing flexibility and anticipation of, of an up to 10% cost increase. Not that that's the number, but that's kind of what we're working in the parameters of.
So what's your timeline on putting the bid out now? What kind of dates you're looking at?
We're going to be meeting in another week to wrap up the language of the bid documents. I really wanted to have an opportunity to address the board today to see if there was any feedback one way or the other before we hit the gas on this full speed. But we're ready to go in a matter of weeks to get the bid documents on the street.
Were you aware of this at the time? I guess my question is, the fact that this package can get delayed until next year, is that going to have any significant? package can get delayed until next year, is that going to have any significant impact on the operational cost of heating the Havilin Middle School this year, that might run afoul of the budgeted money we put in?
Our budget for next year for utility costs is very similar to this year's budget. And should we delay the entire project until next summer, well, the remaining portion of the project until next summer, we would anticipate similar to this current year. Obviously, it gets better if the project gets done, but we weren't banking on the project completion when we planned our budget for next year. So it shouldn't have any significant impact. Thank you.
So you're planning to come back before the end of the year with a recommendation as to which way to go?
Yeah, I'd like to be able to-
There aren't a whole lot of meetings left.
We have got two, and I'd like to be back by the second.
Okay.
You mentioned that you may displace as many as, is it nine classrooms?
In one of the phases, I believe, yes. Nine rooms would be affected.
Okay. How did the building administrators feel about that, from a standpoint of being able to keep education going?
Well, we haven't rolled it out as far as building administrator conversation, because although Mr. Shaw's not here today, he usually is, and probably would have had a little chat with me in the hallway after the meeting.
He'll get you on camera.
But quite frankly, we were operating under the existing relocation plan that Mr. Shaw put together last year. We know what his not-to-exceed classroom count is for relocation throughout the rest of the building, and we tried to stay well within the parameters of that. I believe, I don't want to commit to a firm number, but I can say that I think our maximum number of classrooms to be moved is somewhere around half of the maximum that he can move, once we started having heating failures and he was able to move over 10 rooms at a time.
Why is it I feel I could identify the Havilin teachers just by the reaction on their faces when that mention came? I mean, they all wanted to do this. I don't want to know. I don't want to know.
Well, and again, it's a tough conversation to have, and it would only happen in the very early parts of the year.
My only concern, not concern, but my reaction to this is, I can understand us having available classrooms to bounce back and forth. I don't know that we have enough mobile, whatever they need, so that the teachers can just push a button and everything moves from classroom to classroom. But my concern is, I know we don't have viable extra labs to work with, you know. So if any of those relocations affect those lab classes, I can see them going two or three weeks without any labs, and then going two or three weeks with nothing but labs to balance it out.
I can say this, and I think we can, I have some Havilin people that are going to look for me in the parking lot after this. I'll try to be real tactful here.
I'll tell you where his car is.
Really? Wow. We'll be frank. The most affected rooms would be the lower science rooms in the A section. That being said, they'd be done first. We'd get in and get out. They already have similar equipment to what we're going to be installing through the rest of the A section. So essentially, those rooms are getting upgraded, where all the other rooms are getting converted. So they'll be able to get done at a much faster pace. It's the shortest window of the bunch, and we'd start over the summer to get them back into their rooms by September, October.
That is a paid political announcement.
Thank you, Mr. Duffy, for telling everybody that I'll be in the parking lot after this.
No, no. But that's, you know-
Well, and that's the case.
The game you got to play, and I know the game we played last year was a very delicate situation, as far as moving, you know. We'd move to, a couple of times, we moved to an alternate classroom, only to find out that the gods of heat were not with us, and that classroom broke down immediately at the time we occupied it. Now, we were going from bad to bad.
And again, in this case, we're going to try to get them back in within the first four to six weeks of school, and that would be the most affected section. Then after that, we would move up into the A, seven, eight, nine cluster, and then the middle hallway.
And I'll admit to being an engineer, and therefore very biased towards labs and their functionality. We're trying to include, we just talked about STEM and the encouragement of kids to move into that realm of work, and we don't want to make it look like it's not a viable area to be in.
Agreed.
Okay. Any other questions? Steve?
Elliot, sounds like a trade-off. Sounds like one plan is going to deliver the upgrades more quickly, but impact the student body more. Is that fair?
I would say so. I think, you know, and again, just to be crystal clear, there were more than just these two options on the table originally, and those that remain are the ones that would have the least student impact. I mean, our first consideration was, how's this going to affect the kids, the teachers in these rooms? We wanted to do as little interruption as possible, but still mitigate the risk of a cold building where kids have trouble learning at all. So it's absolutely a trade-off, and we're very thankful that at least we have the first and the second phases completed by next school year. So we've made progress. We're not in the same situation we were two years ago by far. But it's going to be a trade-off, and it's going to come down to what we can afford to do, or what we can afford to do without, in order to get the project completed, as the board would recommend.
It's not clear which one is more cost-effective?
Not yet. And I think Gary hit on that point earlier. Priorities change vendor to vendor. So one vendor may charge you 2% to 4% difference, one way or the other, and one may be an increase, and one may be a decrease. One guy may not be busy this fall and already have work scheduled for next summer, and vice versa for another contractor. So this was more of an informative conversation, so that when we come back, hopefully next month, we can be a little bit more detailed with the financial piece, and be able to say that even if the board chooses to go one way or the other, you'll have all the information in front of you as to the cost.
And finally, the impact of not doing it this, as soon as possible, doesn't leave us in a position where we're going to be closing schools, because, closing the building because it's not heated. The worst case, it sounds like we're going to have space heaters in some rooms.
Yeah, I think this year, we got through with maybe half a dozen rooms utilizing space heaters on the coldest days. I think you folks, give me nods. Close? It was better. My first winter was tough. And in that time, we've spent honestly over a quarter million dollars, between repair money and capital money, to make improvements, to fix that section, and get it geared up for this major project. So with the work that we've done, knowing that this past winter was colder than even the previous one, where we had 16 rooms getting moved at a time, and we were able to get through it with a half a dozen space heaters, I'd say we can most assuredly get through the winter, but we're still dealing with equipment that is far beyond its useful life expectancy, and we don't want to extend those risks any longer than we absolutely have to.
Okay.
Okay. Elliot?
Okay, thank you.
We now have up to 7.5, multiple pathways to graduation.
Good evening, everyone. So this evening, I'm going to share a little bit of information about a change that has been approved by the Board of Regents, and it has to do with the requirements for students to graduate. And I was reminded not too long ago of a process that I went through with our Strategic Planning Committee several years ago, probably close to 10 now. And the process was to really talk about the creation of a set of commitments. And in some of our documents, including our strategic plan, there is a two-sided page that describes our commitments to students in terms of curriculum, assessment, instruction, commitments to collaboration and the community. And one of those commitments that was created was to offer student choice as much as possible and as a young age as possible. And as I was reading through, again, the memo that came to us from the Board of Regents and the State Ed Department in April, I was thinking about that idea of choice, because in part, that's what the new pathway is focusing on. So the New York State Education Department has a vision, and I'm just going to read, I don't often read from the screen, but I will tonight. College and career readiness in New York State will ensure that all students graduate high school able to succeed in post-secondary programs of study and the workforce, that they understand and demonstrate citizenship skills, and that they may meaningfully contribute to the economic and democratic well-being of our society. To that end, in October of last year, the Board of Regents was presented with recommendations from the P-12 Committee, the P standing for preschool. So we look at the entire continuum when we talk about what the State Education Department is responsible for. Their recommendations were presented for approval in January, and the Board of Regents did approve those recommendations. And the new pathway actually applies to students who entered ninth grade in 2011 and thereafter. Some things have not changed. Students are still required to have 22 credits in order to graduate. But the significant change has to do with the number and type of Regents exams that students will be required to pass in order to graduate high school. And what is still true is that students must take one Regents exam in each of the following areas, English, math, science, and social studies. That's a given. What will change, and it's a fairly dramatic change, is that in addition to those four, students will be required to take one additional Regents exam in the area of their choice. So, the areas of choice are the humanities, and that includes English and social studies. The advanced placement course that you heard about from Mary Ann and her students is an example of one of those kinds of courses in the humanities department. You heard from Deborah Krawcheck and Colleen Gilbert regarding STEM, science, technology, engineering, and math. The State Education Department is moving away a little bit from the use of LOT, languages other than English, and moving toward the use of the term bi-literacy. So a student who's really enamored with foreign language and the capacity to communicate in a number of languages could choose for their fifth Regents exam, a language assessment. There's enormous conversation and support for extending that choice in emphasis and focus to career in technology, and I'll talk a little bit more about that. But in essence, there are assessments that could be chosen by a student that would allow them to have that concentration, if you will, in career in tech. And then finally, in the arts. And we know in our district how much we value and cherish the arts. Our music and art departments are incredible, and the student work, as evidenced by tonight's pride, the letter that we got from the governor for Gene Schofield, is a good example of that commitment. So as you can see, what the focus is, in part, is the idea that students choose an area. And it doesn't mean that they've created a major necessarily, because they're not taking five Regents exams in one area necessarily, but it does allow them some flexibility. And one of the things that I think we'll all be thinking about is what the role of the guidance counselor becomes in terms of helping students think about and prepare for what that fifth choice might be. I wanted to share more detail on the math and science in particular, because of the focus on STEM, and because there are some very specific additional requirements if a student chooses that. So I'm going to talk through each of these columns, just so that those who don't have it in front of them will understand what we're looking at. So what we know is that, at the very least, in terms of the four required Regents exams, one of those is in math and one is in science. In order to get a Regents diploma through the STEM pathway, if that's the choice, students need to take not only the one math and science that's required, but one in each of those areas. So for that student, four Regents exams become six. Okay? We currently have a system in which students can earn an advanced diploma, or a diploma with advanced designation. That will continue, but it will be advanced designation in an area of choice. So as you can see in that column, if your choice is either humanities, the LOT, or bilingual area, career in tech or art, then you take three math and two science. But if that advanced designation is following the STEM pathway, there is yet an additional expectation. So in total, for a STEM advanced designation, students would be taking four math Regents and three science Regents. So that's a lot, right? I see Dan saying, whoa. What I can say happily is that we currently offer, one, two, three, four, five, six math courses that have a traditional Regents exam attached to them, and one, two, three, four, five, six, eight, nine science courses that have traditional Regents exams attached to them. So there is already in our curriculum, opportunity for students to meet those expectations, should they choose to go the STEM pathway, and should they choose to go the STEM pathway with advanced designation. Those are very rigorous, challenging expectations. Also identified in the pathways document from state ed is the attention that needs to be paid to our students who receive special education services. And I think most of you are somewhat familiar, at least, with the concept of the safety net. And the current application of that is that students with an IEP can achieve a passing score on our Regents exams if they score between a 55 and a 64. For students who do not receive those services, as you know, passing is a 65. Additionally, in very recent history, an additional safety net was implemented that allowed students to basically trade out a good score, a passing score in an English or math Regents, for a failing score in a science or in a social studies. So the two safety nets that are in place now for our students who receive those services will continue. So they will have the same choice that others will have, they will have the same protection that they currently have. The language of the pathways document speaks not only to Regents exams themselves, but to alternate assessments. And this is where I want to come back to the idea of career in technology. As you can see on the left, we have those assessments that we're most familiar with. Our advanced placement assessments, SAT subject tests are going to be considered as an allowable alternative. So if a student wanted to take our four Regents exams, one in English, math, science, and social studies, and then four their fifth, if they wanted to choose a subject-specific SAT, that's a possibility for them. What we have not yet seen from the State Education Department is a list of approved alternates in foreign language or in the arts. Those are still in development. But if you look on the right, you can see the things that are more commonly found in the career in tech programs that our students attend at BOSI's. So in all of the trade areas that they take courses in, or at least in many of them, I should say, there are certifications that students can leave that program with. And what the State Ed Department is saying is that if a student takes their four Regents exams, and then they want to choose as their alternate, something in a trade that is coming out of their BOSI's program, and it's a certification program, then that will be allowable. And that's an option that our students, quite frankly, haven't had. And some of our students who attend BOSI's in those programs struggle, even with logistical things like scheduling, getting all the right English and science and math courses and social studies courses in, when they're also doing a half-day program at BOSI's. So that presents options and opportunities for our students that have not existed in the past. So that's only a little bit, but it is what we know to be true right now. As I mentioned, I think that the merits of the new regulations are really around student choice and flexibility, but still maintaining a high sense of expectation for a liberal arts education, if you will. I think some of our challenge will be getting information and approval for some of those alternate assessments, and really making sure that all of us and our guidance counselors in particular have the information that they need to guide students, and to talk with parents, and to make sure that we're tracking courses over the years to ensure that students have the right combination of assessments. I don't think it's difficult, but it is new, and it will require, you know, some very keen attention, I think. So that's as much as I have to share with you tonight. I'm sure there are questions- So, that's as much as I have to share with you tonight. I'm sure there are questions, perhaps comments, and I will be coming back as additional information comes our way.
Cora, we've just been made aware, and very recently, of the final selection of a replacement at the SED.
Yes.
Is it our expectation that these projects, these definitions, these things in process right now will continue a pace of where they were going before? Or will some of this slow down or come to a halt while she gets on board as to what's going on and puts her stamp on what and where this department -- because some of the things I've read seem to be going to change directions in some areas as to where we've been or where we're going.
Right. Well, as you know, I always hesitate to make a guess about what might happen in Albany.
We keep telling you to get a crystal ball.
I know. Well, yeah, it needs polishing, for sure. What I know is that the Regents has approved regulation. So, we have regulation on the books. So, the only way to change the path, no pun intended, is for that regulation then to change. What might slow down, I would anticipate, could be the process of attending to finding and approving all those alternate assessments that we're hoping for in the arts and in LOT, or in the foreign language. But, I would be -- well, I shouldn't say be surprised. It would be interesting to watch if, all of a sudden, after approval in January, someone said, "Okay, we're going to take that regulation apart." I'm operating on the assumption that we should be prepared, at the very least, for our students to have opportunity to explore those assessments that have already been approved. APs, SAT subject tests, career in tech exams that result in a certificate of some kind. I think where we'll see a delay is in the other assessments that haven't been identified.
Because it'd be very disconcerting to me to see students plan this year, you know, especially those that are sophomores or juniors, how they're going to achieve this by their graduation date, to suddenly find a year from now that suddenly one of the paths or one of the areas that they could have achieved has been pulled out from under them, and there's not enough time to get it back in. Because, like I say, some of these advanced certifications require a sequencing of science, and math, and AP courses, and
Yeah.
It's like a locomotive going full speed down the tracks, you know? You don't turn it around.
Right.
You derail it, and you create havoc, but you don't turn it around.
Yeah. So, we'll see.
And we know the state has been so consistent.
I know.
I had to get my anti-state remark in somewhere.
I know. Anything else?
Any other questions? No? Thank you, Cora.
You're welcome.
Okay. Brings us to my favorite point. May I have a motion for public participation, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Thank you. At this time, we're in public participation. If anybody would like to address the board, please step to the podium, and if you could keep it to three minutes, it'd be great. I won't cut you off at three minutes, but if, in deference to other people who might want to speak, if you could keep it to three minutes, it would be good. Anybody?
Oh, no. Hey, you've done such a good job already.
Wow. May I have a motion to exit public participation, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Sorry. Opposed? Thank you. And that brings us to board discussion. In the last election, we -- the voters approved the addition of a student board member. There are certain law requirements. We have -- they should be in front of everybody. You should have a copy of that. This is taken from Ichabod Crane's policy. And it seems to me to be -- well, I'll just read part of it. "So, the selected student representatives serving the board shall serve as an ex officio member and shall be entitled to sit with board members at all public meetings of the board and participate in all board hearings, meetings, and shall not be allowed to vote." So, they can participate with the board. They can be a part of the discussion, and they just don't get a vote. When we pitched this to the seniors, they kind of said, "Well, that's not fair." But, you know, life's not fair, so. What we have to discuss is how we're going to select that student. And it looks like Ichabod Crane put every legal way in their policy. So, those legal ways are: a student can be duly elected president -- the duly elected president of the high school; a student duly elected by the student body; a student selected by the high school student government; a student selected by the high school principal; a student selected by the superintendent; or a student selected by a majority vote of the board. I think the crux of this is the selection process itself. I would be reluctant to have a duly elected member of the student body, because that just becomes kind of a popularity contest. My personal preference isn't listed here, so I don't know how.
Well, let's eliminate the ones we
I would -- certainly, the student government, the teachers at the high school teach citizenship and, you know, the community. I would feel better if there was, like, three students recommended and then a vote, or I can -- I actually, that would be my preference. I don't know. What is it? I'm going to stop talking and let everybody else.
I would like to -- in my own opinion, is the last two listed were two I would not be very strongly in favor of: a student selected by the superintendent or a student selected by the majority vote of the board. If no other, you know, the word collusion comes to mind. In either case, there could always be a feeling that the student selected was an akin feeling to the board or to the superintendent, and I don't want -- we want to do what we really talked about, is bring an extra set of eyes, an extra set of opinions, to focus on the items and discussion items we're talking about. And I think, whether it's true or not, there is always the perception that there may be something of that nature, so I would not want to consider either one of them.
I would want, however they're selected, to have that student have some connection to the student government so that
Yes.
...information gets disseminated down. It doesn't have to be a member of the, you know, the officials of the student government, but I would certainly like to have as part of the duties to report back to the student government.
I'd like a little clarity. On the bottom of the sheet that we were giving here, it says "law for student board members." Is that to suggest that that, which is in a bracket, comes from the law?
Yeah. Yes, it does.
Okay. So, I guess my question is, do we have, if that's what comes from State Ed law, are we not required to follow that? I mean, are we at liberty to modify this?
I would say no. That's why my suggestion wouldn't work. But I think
So, how much discussion do we really have here? I mean, if this is what the state says, if you're going to have a student board member, this is the way that it's selected.
So, you know, that's why we're suggesting, if we eliminate the ones we don't agree with, it narrows down our choices. It could make this discussion fairly short.
Well, I guess the question is, is can we eliminate any part of this?
Oh, yeah. Well, you choose one of these. You know, one of these ones is the one we're going to use. Having talked with the students in the classes when we did the board presentation, I would like to, and we are investigating, the ability to have a student alternate, because many times, a student might not be able to come. Maybe it's an athletic or a concert or something that where they can't be there, that there could be an alternate, but we don't know if that's legal yet. I've asked to have the lawyers look at that.
Yeah. And we know how successful this year we were in making sure that when the board meetings were held, there was nothing else going on that would involve students.
The other thing I think we should discuss is, at what point do they get selected? For this coming year, it's going to have to be sometime starting in September, but I think in subsequent years, it should be 11th graders who are selected at the end of this school year to serve, starting in their senior year, because it has to be a
My biggest concern with the process is that it doesn't turn into a popularity contest.
Right.
A lot of student government elections are heavily swayed, shall we say, by popularity of the candidates.
Right.
On the other hand, I don't want to take the decision entirely away from the student I wonder whether we could institute a system whereby candidates are selected by the staff or the faculty or the administration, and the students vote for the final candidate.
Right. That's what I prefer, too. But it doesn't, and it doesn't say -- you can read this, you know, "A student duly elected by the student body," doesn't say you can't have a recommended cast, so.
Right.
I think you still can say within this law and still do it differently.
But one of the recommendations says it could be selected by the principal, so why can't the principal select a few names and then vote by the body, the student body?
You know, I'm not so quick to jump on the idea that student government, that those who are elected to student government at the high school are not a good pool to draw from. I mean, I don't spend enough time in the high school to say that it's a popularity contest. I mean, I've met student body presidents that I thought were very responsible people and took their roles very seriously. And if we're looking for a group that might bring constructive ideas and thoughtful ideas to the board, they may be a great organization. Otherwise, you may get an individual who may have very individual ideas but have no organization in which to gather and pull information from. They may not be connected in a lot of ways to what the student body is doing. So, I'd actually, I'd like to hear perhaps from others who may work a little closer, perhaps people who are advisors, class advisors. What do they see?
Do you know how it's done in Red Hook? How is it done in Red Hook?
I'm not sure. I'm not sure. I think it may be a member from the student council. I don't know that it's the president of the student council, but
I might suggest that we have a high school teacher here, a wonderful high school teacher, who might be able to offer a little, at least, opinion, if not recommendation. So, Mary Ann, do you mind? I know I'm putting you on the spot, and would you mind doing it at the mic so our viewers at home can hear your words of wisdom?
If you can keep your list of credits as to why we think you are worthy of being at the podium for under 10 minutes.
Mary Ann Mullen. Well, thank you, and I'm glad that I'm here, because I also am a social studies teacher, but I'm also the student government advisor. So, and I do teach government as well, and thank you for coming to explain that to the students. I also teach the AP course, and we've recently -- this is related. We've recently moved to the open enrollment, where kids who are interested sign up for the AP course and have the opportunity. And I feel very strongly that, I feel like that any student who would want to serve in this role should have the opportunity. However, I also feel that they should be clear about what the expectation is and what their role would be. So, I might, I mean, I would suggest inviting candidates to a meeting. I mean, I know everyone's technically invited, but I don't see a problem with asking anyone who was interested in running to, you know, indicate their interest to the board and then come to a meeting. So, they would really see, you know, just as a public citizen, because I think a lot of students have, most of the students have no idea. I will tell you that the student government students were very interested. They knew about this from attending or seeing board minutes already. They're keenly interested, and many of them serve in other youth advisory boards throughout the county. Now, there is perhaps, sometimes there can be a popularity piece in the election process, but I also think that some of those students are really interested in governance and the way that their community is responding. So, you know, I think it's sort of, I think everything that you've said is really important to be taken into consideration, but I also think that it also, in order for the position to have any legitimacy and not sort of be seen as a tool for teachers or for a particular point of view, I think it's important that we, I don't know, I really feel strongly that there needs to be student input, but also there needs to be an accountability piece and a sort of a clearly laid-out set of expectations. I think that would discourage anyone who are just interested in, I mean, that's my experience, is when they sort of know what they're getting into. And the level of commitment that you're asking, you know, generally only serious people will sort of put themselves into that position. And parental, I would ask for parental input and permission and support, really, not permission maybe isn't the right word, but support, just so that the whole family knows what the community is asking. Thank you.
You picked the best night of all to be here, Mary Ann. Thank you.
Okay. I think that's good food for thought, and we should -- I think getting it done initially is going to be difficult, and I think once we come up with a way of conveying, I guess, I think it's a good idea to convey the expectations for a student board member. I mean, it's hard enough being a regular board member when, and the expectations are implied, but you don't know until you've been subjected to this for a year or so. So, it's, for a student, they only have one year. So, I think clear expectations are essential. Since we're going to need a policy on this, I would suggest that we have a policy meeting. We ask to have input from a teacher, the high school principal, maybe somebody from the student body and get together, because I think it's too important to just have us make up rules, which we can do, and, you know, we might even get it right, but, you know.
Oh, come on.
Well, we do have to stay in the guidelines.
Stay within, they're very broad guidelines. If you read them selectively, you can kind of fit almost anything into this list, so. And I don't think anybody's going to come down and go, "Oh, you didn't follow rule number 17," you know?
Well, and we'll share the guidelines with the people that you're asking to provide input to the policy committee.
Okay. So, at this point, we have the consent agenda, and when we have students here, this is the point where we say, you know, "You got homework, you know, you have stuff, you know, maybe you ought to leave." And I would like to extend that invitation to our newly tenured teachers who are very kind to come here and sit here and listen to this, but you're welcome to say what's not necessary, so have a good evening and good night.
Could we recognize the ones that are here just before they leave? Just have them identify themselves at the mic before they leave? Because this is, it's a significant step for the district, but it's much more significant for the teachers.
Nothing like, this is the penance for being able to leave.
My name is Denise Hoffman. I'm a special education teacher at Violet Avenue Elementary School.
Thanks, Denise. Thanks, Denise.
I'm Valerie Barnes. I'm also a special education teacher, but I'm at FDR.
Thank you.
I'm Kathy Hurley. I'm also a special education teacher at Havlin Middle School.
Thank you.
Of all the bases.
I'm Caitlin Stumpf. I'm a life and workforce skills teacher at Havlin Middle School. Thank you.
Thank you. And have a good evening.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Okay, can I have a motion for 11.1, the consent agenda, please? As noted in the agenda.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Oppose? Thank you. That brings us down to bid awards, right? First, no, is that part of it?
Eleven.
Eleven, alright, sorry. See, watch your computer, you can't keep me honest.
Yes, I can.
I have a motion for 11.1, special education placements.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
I have reviewed the packet as presented to us. I would like to note the fact of a significant increase in the volume in this particular packet as we get to the end of the year. We've been averaging maybe 20 pages total, and we got closer to 50 this time, which reflects the work that's being done and the cleanup that's, you know, going on. So if some of our coordinators and stuff look a little frazzled, I have a feeling I know the secret. And I recommend it's, it's adopted as presented to us.
All in favor? Oppose? Thank you. Brings us to the establishment of scholarship, 11.2. That would be the, the establishment of the Joseph Weiner Memorial Scholarship based upon information that we've received.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? I guess I'll say thank you for creating this, if this goes to our students. All in favor? Oppose? Thank you. You have a motion for Capitol Project Bid Award, Phase Four, A2.
Phase two. So moved. Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I see one bid award here for $250,000. Was, was there other bids?
Yes.
Did I, am I missing a document somewhere that might list?
The bids, those are the ones we did this morning, right? Or is that this?
No, those were-
Oh, no, this is a different one.
Yeah, usually there's a memo indicating that this is, you know.
Yeah, you, I thought usually we get a little spreadsheet that shows what the-
There was a spreadsheet attached to it. My computer died.
Okay.
During the meeting, so I'm sorry.
We, um... Yeah, but we need to approve this if we... That's a good question, Perry. Thank you.
Okay. Man, I just thought I was overlooking something, but I'm here looking at it again and-
It's a very late-
Do you think we awarded that previously?
I think, uh-
In March?
I think we awarded this before.
That's what Mr. Garcia is saying as well.
We had all that info in the packet.
Yeah, I'm-
I don't-
Yeah. Debbie's gonna go get the, the folder. So for, for A2, isn't that the doors?
Yes, doors and windows.
Doors and windows, yeah, so.
Which is working, sorry.
You're right, I thought we already did that.
We did this month.
Yeah, or otherwise they couldn't have bid it.
March 12.
March 12, Elliot is saying.
March 12?
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Okay. So this is just the finiation of, the final actual bid of the-
No, we actually awarded it already at that.
At that time?
This is the duplicate.
Elliot, were you looking at the minutes from the March 12 meeting?
Yes.
Yeah, so it was approved then.
We, we approved the, the $250,000-
Correct.
Bid from Key?
Yep, on March 12, item 10.3, I believe. Yep, 10.3. And I need more money, so. Take another 2K.
We snuck in here to see if we were awake.
It was March 12. It was March 12.
Okay.
If we already did, then we should take this off the agenda.
I know, I'm sorry. It kind of feels that way.
It's a trap they put in there for the substitute.
Yeah.
So this is actually the March 12 one?
What's that?
Is this one we, yeah, but I haven't signed it yet, so.
No, the, he said it was awarded on the March, what was it?
March 12.
March 12.
March 12.
12.
The contract needed to be signed.
But the contracts weren't signed, and I mistakenly thought that this had to be, that this had not yet been approved. Because I don't let things go by and have you sign them without-
Oh, okay, okay. So the problem is, the thing, so may I have a motion to remove 11.3 from the agenda, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Oppose? Thank you, Perry. Good catch.
You know what?
Would've made a nice vacation money though, why? May I have a motion for 11.4, stipulation of settlement, HPTA?
I'll move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Oh, wrecked the public participation, and I already chased the public out, so we'll, we'll go through the motions. I have a motion for public participation, please.
I'll move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Oppose? Okay, may I have a motion to exit public participation?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Okay. Other matters deemed necessary by the board. I would like to inform you, I've been asked by Mr. Minnemeyer to have, to put on as a board discussion item for a pre, you know, a following meeting, and we might as well make it next meeting, but I would like to give it time to think about it on, I believe you said, on the board officer election process? Is that close enough?
Yeah.
So whether or not we want to have things like, whatever, term limits, a succession, you know, where the vice president moves into the president's spots after two years, you know, anything, I would like you all to think about how we could equitably spread the positions to people who would like to do that. And then we'll have a discussion on it, and we'll decide what we're, what we're gonna do, and, but I would like, I didn't want to spring it on you and just put it on the board as a thing and have you say, what, what's that all about, you know, so.
Could I ask, is there any guidelines and/or anything else that-
I, I don't know. That's a good question.
Or the New York School Board Association has? Perhaps we, if, if there's, I could ask the board clerk to research and circulate anything that might be out there, either-
I've met board presidents who have been board president for 20 years, you know.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, I don't know if there's-
And in-
It, it is elect, it'll be in process, but, I mean, how the, the, I think, Steve, what you were getting at was on the process of how people who would like to be the vice president or the president get to that position. But it's, as Debbie said, it's still an, it's still an elected part, but I know I have to think about it more, so that, we got two weeks to-
Yeah.
To the next meeting, let's think about it, and we'll discuss it then, but I just wanted to give you a heads up. That way, nobody's surprised, and everybody can say, gosh, I didn't even think about that, you know, so. So, moving on. Board Subcommittee Reports. I don't know, we call that a tech meeting, when we, about the board?
We'll call it a special committee meeting.
Special committee meeting, why don't you?
So, Tuesday, Tuesday evening, Doug and I, as representatives of the board, Elliot and Forrest, met in this room to talk about possible enhancements for the technology used during board meetings, as well as the possibility of reconfiguring the room.
I forgot about that.
The, and, and it was a fairly wide-ranging conversation, but we decided that the, among the highest priorities was containing the budget of, of any sort of renovation. And, and so that precluded a lot of, a lot of work like knocking out walls, for example. We also decided against going to an audio or a video contractor. You know, when we set this goal, I don't think anybody had in mind to spend $80,000 or $100,000 on improving the, the technology in the room.
We just saved $250.
There you go. So, so, the bottom line is that the, the straw man plan that we arrived at was effectively two parts. The first is that we think that it would be advisable to knock out the corner entry, entryway here, so that the room becomes a true rectangle. That would force us to change the way we bring people into the room during the meetings. They would have to enter through the, the front door of the building, but that seems like a reasonable thing to do. So, remove that part, and now we've got a rectangular room. After you do that, you move the board tables so that they are at this end facing the, the end of the building where the restrooms are. Immediately what happens then is you double or triple the seating volume for anyone who wants to watch the meeting, just because you can fit more chairs in the room. And then finally, and actually where my thinking had started was, one of my long-term complaints with the setup of this room has been that the screen is over on the hard left, and those board members who sit over there are forced to either turn around and see the screen or forced to watch it on their, their display, on their laptop. For those of us on this side, it's far enough away that it's often hard to read the, the display. And so, to address that, we arrived at, again, a tentative plan to put up three displays in the room. The first would hang from the ceiling at an appropriate distance from the board, so that the board would all be facing forward and, and viewing something that's hung from the ceiling, so it would be very easy to see. The other two would be mounted to that wall and this wall at staggered spacing on a, an adjustable bracket, so that they could swing out and be adjusted for optimal viewing by the audience. Furthermore, all three screens would have separate video inputs, so that when the room was used as a meeting room, anyone could walk up, plug in their laptop, and immediately use an individual screen as a display.
Okay, yeah, I think, I think it's important to note the multiple use, it would, I mean, this is, room is used for multiple purposes now, but it could be used for a lot more, especially if you, we, we also thought about partitioning where it might have two rooms that you could have.
Yeah, so the other-
But that's still, it's kind of like in, in planning-
Yeah.
Discovery phase, I guess is a good one.
So the other, the other part of this is a discussion about precisely where the money comes from. Right, right now, everybody in the room Tuesday felt pretty confident that all of the renovations we talked about could be contained for less than $15,000, and I think that we were actually aiming closer to $10,000. But we're still looking to solidify those numbers. Furthermore, because it's an enhancement to the room as both a general purpose meeting room as well as a board room, it, one of the considerations would be to take the, the money from a PD line item or a, some sort of an education line item. However, I also checked with the clerk, and there's several thousand dollars in a board expenditures fund, so perhaps some sort of a... Pardon me? So, so I think that there's, there's already funding-
Funding, yeah. I think that's important, too, that, you know, there's a lot of budget line items that could be shaved or some of the, you know, some of that money for any particular line item might be available for this very small enhancement, and you get a lot for the bucks, so.
Yeah, so as it stands, it seems like we could make some pretty significant, important and, and improvements for actually a pretty small sum.
Oh, okay. Okay, we also had an all-day tech meeting where we discussed the district technology plan and helped develop the various sections of it in order, and this is a key thing because it's required in order to qualify for the tech funding that the governor put in the last election. So in order to get the portions of, and eventually all of the $2.6 million that Hyde Park was awarded in the technology grant, you have to submit a, a tech plan in a format that the state wants, so we were able to get that done, and I think we're in pretty good shape. Are there any other meeting, EFN meeting? Okay, let's go to upcoming meetings. Tuesday, June 9th, 4 o'clock, Title I parent meeting here at the administration office.
Let me just correct you if you don't mind.
Oh, okay.
Those meetings are at Violet Avenue and at Ralph Harthsmith, our two Title I schools. I see that. We adjusted that after our review with State Ed and really determined that those meetings should be happening in the buildings that the children are served in.
Okay. But you didn't change the board meeting. The Thursday, June 11th, 7 o'clock, Board of Education meeting right here in this room in the administration office. There is no need for an executive session?
Doug, if I could add about future meetings, the Dutchess County School Board Association will be having their annual meeting-
Oh, that's correct.
In June. It's a dinner meeting that's going to be held at the Poughkeepsie School District's, District Office, City of Poughkeepsie. There's gonna be two speakers at this meeting. One will be Assemblywoman DeeDee Barrett, and the other is New York State School Board Association James Page, Director of IT and Field Services. And all board members are welcome to attend. We just ask for your RSVP by June 1st. Meeting's at 6 o'clock.
Yeah, that's, that's Monday, yeah.
Yeah, and it's dinner, so.
Thank you, Perry. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Oppose? Thank you very much.